Good morning, folks. We're going to get started. Sorry for the delay. Thank you. Everybody's seated. We're going to get started. We've established our quorum. So we're going to start out with our invocation today. To give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Iman Farid, W. Rasool, Amir, and President of Maslis Ashura of the Philadelphia and Delaware Valley, and Iman of Masjid Asabi Kun. He is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Gauthier. I would ask all members and guests to please rise. Iman?
Peace be unto you. Alhamdulillah. I'd like to say to all of you and members of Amir, so today is actually the one-year anniversary of us burying him last year. And to be here today is a great honor. But before I say the prayer, I'd like to say this to you. I'd like to tell you something to think about while we're praying. And that is, there's a little boy who was an only child. And his parents were doing very well, and they moved out into the suburbs. And so when he got out to the suburbs, he had a big driveway and swimming pool and everything in the back. And at the same time, he had the basketball court to play with, but he had nobody to play with. So he was always playing catch by himself, catch by himself, throw the ball, try to run and catch it. And after a while, he got tired. So when his daddy came on the driveway, he ran up to the car and said, Daddy, 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 please play catch with me. Please play catch with me. So the daddy had all his work from the office. He says, Son, I can't do it right now, but I promise you, if Daddy, tomorrow when Daddy comes home, Daddy promised you he'll play catch with you. And so the next day, the little boy was out there waiting for Daddy to come to the driveway. And when Daddy came up to the driveway and pulled up, he ran to the car and said, Daddy, 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 I'm ready, I'm ready, I'm ready, I'm ready. And the father forgot that he had promised him to play catch. So he said, Oh, yeah, we're supposed to play catch. So he said, Okay, well, walk here in the office with me so I can take my briefcase in the office, son, and then we'll do, and then we'll do play catch. He said, Okay, okay, Daddy, okay, Daddy. So the father was trying to figure out, how can I buy some more time because I need to get this work done for the office? And so then the little boy, the little boy said, Daddy, Daddy, you ready? And so the father said, he opens briefcase up and blows all the papers out. They said, Well, listen, listen, Daddy, Daddy gotta just put these papers together. And when Daddy put these papers together, while he's doing that, it was a map of the world on the desk. And he took the map of the world up and he tore it up into all these pieces. And he gave the little boy, he said, While Daddy is putting these papers together, you put these papers back together. He put this map back together, and then we'll go play catch. Okay? He said, Okay, Daddy, okay, okay. So the little boy came back 15 minutes later saying, Daddy, 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 I got it, I'm ready, let's go play catch. And he said, Son, you can't, you can't be ready yet. So he walked in the other room and looked, and the map was put together. Looked at his sons, I didn't know I had a genius. Looked back at the map, says, Really put together? Then he said, Son, how in the world did you put that map together? He said, Daddy, there was a picture of a man on the back of it. So I figured if I put the man together, the world would be in place. So today, I'd like to rest off of this prayer and invocation based upon us trying to make the world be in place and know that we can only do that by helping every man put himself together. I will first say the prayer in Arabic, and then I'll say it in English, so you know what I've said. Allah, we pray that you would bless this body of assembly. We pray that you would fortify their hearts and swell their hearts with purity of intent. We pray that their goodness that will come from them by the way of the dutifulness that they do to others will actually shine as a brightness in the eyesight of your view. We pray that you would make them have the courage to stand for truth in the presence of falsehood. We pray that you would have them, give them the courage that they would knock the brains out of falsehood with the truth that they hold. And we pray that their footsteps will be fortified in the way of that that's beneficial to humanity and pleasing to thee and make all of them successful in the way of that pleasing to thee and make them successful in this life as well as the hereafter and make them die not accepted in state of willful submission to you. Amen.
Thank you so much, Iman. We appreciate your spirits or guidance today. Thank you so much. Counselor Beatty? Again, thank you. Thank you, Iman. And our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting on Thursday, January 26, 2023. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, January 26, 2023, be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded. That the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, January 26, 2023 stand approval. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And our journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, there are no requests for leave of absence today.
Chair, thanks to the gentleman. And I recognize Councilman Squilla for a motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of the council session that were not listed on the calendar today prior to our session. Councilman Squilla?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session to counsel and is required by law subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters: Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first readings, reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, amendments to bills recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included in the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Can I get a second? Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded. That the legislative matter stated by Councilman Squilla may be added to the agenda for today should those matters arise during the course of the council session. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. And motion granted. And our next order of business is communication. I would ask the clerk to please read the messages from the mayor and any other communications that he may have in his possession.
From the mayor to the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2252 Hope Street and 2309 Palethorpe Street located in the 7th Councilmanic District, and a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority deeds conveying fees simple titled to certain city-owned lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 3rd Councilmanic District, and a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the independent small urban renewal area, Unit Number 4, identified by house number and street address as 217 through 253 North 9th Street. And an ordinance, pending Section 14300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Administration and Procedures, by changing the language pertaining to quorum for public hearings of the zoning board of adjustment, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. That concludes our communications. And our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. And I would ask the clerk to please read the titles of the bills and resolutions offered by our members today.
Councilwoman Gilmar Richardson offers a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce Economic Development and Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings examining the COVID-19 pandemic's impacts on black-owned businesses and the disparity in rates of closure.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold public hearings on the creation of the 21st Century School District of Philadelphia CTE Middle and High School focused on careers in trades and technology.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing February 2023 as Career and Technical Education Month in Philadelphia.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing February 2023 as Environmental Justice Month in the city of Philadelphia.
Today's calendar.
Councilman Thomas offers a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Champion of the Week, Etheny Cable of Mercy Career and Technical High School for his success in founding, promoting, and managing his own clothing brand, Five Star Clothing.
Today's calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and congratulating Educator Marvin Dutton for celebrating his organization, Marvin's Education Services' 10-year anniversary, servicing the youth of Philadelphia.
Today's calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. I wanted to take a moment to welcome Marvin Dutton of MES Services and congratulate them on 10 years of service. As this is the first council session for Black History Month, I thought it would be important to recognize a black business that's not only thriving here in the city of Philadelphia, but also offering free programming and free services to young people all across the city of Philadelphia. Can we take a moment to just ask all of the young people who've benefited from Marvin's Education Services that's here in city council today just to stand up and welcome them to our council session?
Stand up. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. And I also want to say congratulations to our Champion of the Week. It's important that we continue to highlight and recognize young people who are doing positive things across the city of Philadelphia. Thank you, Council President, and thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Councilman, and welcome and congratulations. Thank you, guys.
Councilman Jones offers one bill and four resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, an ordinance authorizing the construction, installation, ownership, use, and maintenance of a sidewalk cafe at 425 through 449 Spring Garden Street.
Next week.
Excuse me?
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. The resolutions that are being offered today, particularly centered around education, are inspired by our Chair of Education, Member Isaiah Thomas, who Herculeanly had a hearing, a marathon hearing, diving deep into some of the issues centered around education, public education in the city of Philadelphia. What he allowed us to recognize is that all of us support the school district, support our education, but we do have questions as to when and how things are done and holding people accountable. And sometimes, we have to ask uncomfortable questions to get to a place where we get comfortable solutions. So I want to thank him for co-introducing these resolutions today.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Jones offers a privileged resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Education to hold public hearings examining the levels of learning loss as well as attendance trends as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and to understand how the school district of Philadelphia plans to address these issues.
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Education to hold public hearings to examine the top-performing magnet schools in Philadelphia, understand their strength and relationship to underperforming schools, and to develop strategies for future success.
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Education to hold public hearings to evaluate tracking for post-graduation pathways, including college retention rates, career alternatives, military opportunities, and the school-to-prison pipeline.
Also this week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Education to hold public hearings to examine the progress of the school's safe corridor program, to understand its effect on violence reduction.
This week's calendar.
Councilman Johnson offers two resolutions: A privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities to hold hearings to examine the Philadelphia Water Department request to increase water, sewer, and stormwater rates and charges and its impacts on the citizens of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution urging the U.S. Congress to pass House Resolution 1280, the George Floyd Justice and Policing Act of 2021.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Just want to make brief remarks on my resolution I introduced. I'm Council President. I want to thank you and my colleagues for supporting and co-sponsoring the resolution I sponsored today, calling on both the U.S. House and Senate to approve the George Floyd Justice and Policing Act. The U.S. House approved the bill last year, but was never approved by the U.S. Senate. The drafting of the federal legislation was preceded by a series of protests against the deaths of numerous African-Americans at the hands of police officers, including the 2020 deaths of George Floyd in Minneapolis and Breonna Taylor in Lewisville, Kentucky. The passion of the George Floyd Justice and Policing Act would address a wide range of policies and issues regarding policing practices and law enforcement accountability, including combating excessive force and racial bias in policing. The bill increases accountability for law enforcement misconduct, restricts the use of certain policing practices, enhances transparency and data collection, and establishes best practices and training requirements. It would limit qualified immunity as a defense to liability in a private civil action against a law enforcement officer, and would establish a framework to prevent any remedy racial profiling by law enforcement at the federal, state, and local levels. It also limits the unnecessary use of force and restricts the use of no-knock warrants and chokeholds. As Vice Chairman of the City Council's Public Safety Committee, I support the hard work of our Philadelphia Police Department. It understands it is necessary to have, I understand it is necessary to have police officers, but I would never support any law enforcement officer that abuses their power. According to the nonprofit organization Mapping Police Violence, at least 1,176 people were killed by law enforcement officers in the United States in 2022, the most of any year since at least 2013. That is in the average of more than three people a day or nearly 100 people every month last year according to Mapping Police Violence. These are reported deaths at the hands of law enforcement, including people fatally shot, beaten, restrained, and tasered. One of the latest incidents happened three weeks ago when 29-year-old Tyree Nichols was brutally beaten by Memphis tennis police officers. The graphic video of the beating shows the officers punching, kicking, and beating Nichols even after he lay helpless, laying on the ground. I want to praise the Memphis Police Chief, Sermon CJ Davis, for her decisive action so far in this case. The five police officers have been fired and charged with murder. Their specialized unit has been disbanded. Two more officers have been suspended. Two Memphis Fire Department emergency medical workers and a lieutenant was also fired, and more discipline is expected to happen in the future. At Mr. Nichols' funeral, he was remembered by family and friends. It was a celebration of his life, but there were also calls for police reform, not just in Memphis, but throughout the nation. Our Vice President Kamala Harris attended the funeral and delivered an impassioned speech calling on Congress to approve the George Floyd Justice and Policing Act. Even Tyree Nichols' mother, Ms. Rowan Von Wells, called for reform as she fought back tears and spoke lovingly of her son. She said, and I quote, "We need to take some action because there should be no other child that should suffer the way my son and all the other parents have lost their children. We need to get that bill passed. Because if we don't, that blood, the next child that dies, that blood is going to be on their hands. The only thing that keeps me going is that I truly believe that my son was sent here on assignment from God. And I guess now his assignment is done. He's going home." End quote. Tyree Nichols joins a long list of black men and women that have been killed by law enforcement nationwide. There are the names you know, George Floyd in Minneapolis, Breonna Taylor, Tamir Rice, Eric Garner, Philando Castile, Freddie Gray, Michael Brown, and others. Philadelphia and the greater Delaware Valley region is not free from people looting their lives due to actions by law enforcement. In June of 2017, we saw that 30-year-old David Jones was shot three times in the back by then Officer Ryan Pownau as Jones was fleeing during a traffic routine stop. Since the death of George Floyd, Philadelphia has lost Walter Wallace Jr., Terrell Mitchell, Stanley Cochran, and James Alexander at the hands of law enforcement officials. Let's say their names and never forget their names. Again, as Vice Chairman of the City Council's Public Safety Committee, I support the hard work of the Philadelphia Police Department every day. I understand it is necessary to have police officers protecting and serving, but I would never support any law enforcement entity that abuses their power. Thank you very much, Council President, for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Councilman. That will be on next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Lusada offers an ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of Penn Street and Wakeland Street, Griscum Street and Orthodox Street, Leeper Street and Pratt Street, Saul Street and Pratt Street, Penn Street and Harrison Street, Saul Street and Sangre Street, Margaret Street and Torresdale Street, Granite Street and Daras Street, Margaret Street and Duffield Street, Daras Street and Daras Street.
Next week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2252 Hope Street and 2309 Palethorpe Street located in the 7th Councilmanic District.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Brooks offers a privileged resolution honoring and recognizing the dedicated service of Betsy, Ms. Betty Buford, whose determined advocacy on behalf of her South Philadelphia community has strengthened her neighborhood as well as the city of Philadelphia.
This week's calendar.
Councilman Driscoll offers a privileged resolution honoring and celebrating the 2023 St. Patrick's Day Parade.
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring and celebrating the career of Joseph T. Ashdale.
Also this week's calendar.
Councilman Squilla offers a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Clarina I.W. Tolson on the occasion of her retirement from public service.
This week's calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the independent small urban renewal area, Unit Number 4, identified by house number and street address as 217 through 253 North 9th Street.
Next week's calendar.
Councilwoman Bass offers four resolutions: A privileged resolution recognizing February 2023 as American Heart Month and honoring the American Heart Association of Philadelphia for their work in providing health resources in Philadelphia, emphasizing the importance of heart health and encouraging a healthy lifestyle.
This calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing, honoring, and celebrating Imhotep Institute Charter High School on its 25th birthday.
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring the Philadelphia Tennis Club for being the second-oldest black-owned tennis club in the country.
This week's calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring the Woodford Tennis Club for being the oldest black-owned tennis club in the country.
Also this week's calendar.
Councilman O offers a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Rodney Little for his exemplary and outstanding service as a dedicated public servant, police officer, union leader, and military veteran.
This week's calendar.
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions by our members. And our next order of business is reports from committee. And the chair recognizes Councilman Jones for a report from the committee to hold.
The Committee of the Hold reports five resolutions with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the city of Philadelphia, the Committee of the Hold, to which is referred Resolution Number 220689, entitled, A Resolution Appointing McQuan Brinkley to the Board of Directors for the Old City Special Services District, and Resolution Number 220690, entitled, A Resolution Appointing Jeffrey Brown to the Board of Directors of the Old City Special Services District, and Resolution Number 221036, entitled, A Resolution Appointing Paul Badger to the Board of Directors of the Center City District, and Resolution Number 221037, entitled, A Resolution Appointing Valeria Beers to the Board of Directors of the Center City District, and Resolution Number 221038, entitled, A Resolution Appointing Anna Boni to the Board of Directors of the Center City District. Respectful reports that is considered the same and returns the attached resolutions to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The chair again recognizes Councilman Jones. Excuse me. Resolution number, never mind, Councilman. It's on number, never mind, Councilman, it's on me.
It's all right.
Resolution number 220689, resolution number 220690, resolution 221036, 221037, and 221038 will be placed on our final passes calendar at our next session of council. And that concludes our reports from committee, and our next order of business is the consideration of the calendar. As there are additional bills on our first reading calendar, Chair recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on our second reading and final passes calendar today.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following resolutions and bills are being called up from second reading to final passes calendars today. Numbers, 210434, 230039, 230044, 230045, 230046, and 220918. All other bills and resolutions are being held.
All right. Thank you very much. Before we consider these resolutions and bills, we would consider public comment. Your public comment must concern matters on a second reading and final passes calendar. For possible action today, all speakers must sign up in order to testify. If you have not already signed up for today's session, you may do so now at the table outside of the council chambers with the sergeant at arm. Once you have signed up, you will be called in order, in which your name appears on a sign-up sheet, and under ideal circumstances, which we apparently do not have today, because we have a significant list, today's time limit will be two minutes, where we want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to testify. So I'd ask that you please adjust your testimony to reflect a two-minute time limit. In order to be fair to all those wishing to speak, we intend to hold faithfully to the established time limit when you begin speaking. When you go to the podium, you will see a green light. It will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds remaining on your time, and when the light turns red, we would ask you to please adhere to our guidelines and conclude your remarks, and you will then be disconnected, and please yield that to the next speaker. We also reserve the right pursuant to council rules where we may limit repetitious comment on the same subject matter. We actually do have that today, but because of the issue relating the significant testimony on 18, we will hopefully try to get everyone in in their testimony. If we're ready, Mr. Decker, please call the first name on the list.
The first speaker today, Mr. President, is Rachel Kemp, offering comment on behalf of Stacy Phillips.
Good morning. Sorry about that.
No problem.
My name is Rachel Kemp. I am here on behalf of Dr. Phillips, the CEO over at WPACIS. I have been working there for about two years now, and I've lived in the West Philadelphia community for 20-plus years. WPACIS is very excited about the Cobs Creek Foundation and what they're doing in the community, the Cobs Creek Golf Course, and what that means for our community, so that our students and families will have a place where it'll be safe. For the first time in decades, this historical landmark is being revitalized, and it deserves the recognition. Even though the actual educational center will not open until 2024, their educational team, volunteers, have been running excellent programs within WPACIS, which is known as the West Philadelphia Achievement Charter School. I'm sorry, you guys, if I didn't state that. These programs have been supporting our childrens and families. Our children have been doing math tutoring programs, which they love. Also, the Cobs Creek Foundation has been coming in to donate different baskets and stuff for the holidays, like Thanksgiving and Christmas. Also, they've been doing social-emotional program learning with our students as well, and the educational, the staff, I'm sorry, the staff from the education center have been working closely with the school to ensure that programs reflect the needs of our community. Thank you. I see this is a red light, so I'm going to just say that we are greatly appreciative of the Cobs Creek Foundation, and I look forward to many more. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Decker, hold on one second. Before we proceed, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just really briefly, during the part of our program in which we recognize, or actually when Mr. Decker was reading the bills and resolutions introduced today, I did want to make mention that we have in our presence Imhotep Charter School, which is celebrating its 25th anniversary, and we have some folks here, if they could stand, from Imhotep Charter School. All right. And so, we want to, we want to recognize their achievement and excellence. I remember when Imhotep started, and they started in lots, actually in modular units, we'll call them, on lots in northwest Philadelphia. And so here we are 25 years later, and it's a wonderful example of excellence. And I also wanted to just very briefly recognize the Woodford and Philadelphia tennis clubs as being in the 8th district and also the first and second oldest Black tennis clubs in the nation. And we wanted to just recognize that we have that distinguished organization within the city of Philadelphia. Thank you, Mr. President.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you. Mr. Decker, please proceed.
The next speaker is Asma Rae Easley, commenting on 220918.
Asma Rae Easley. Hi, everyone. My name is Asma Rae Easley. I'm a proud native of Philadelphia, which encouraged me to aim to be where I am today. I'm one of the Pab principals at Overbrook Educational Center, also known as OEC, here in the school district of Philadelphia in Overbrook. We are a K-8 school that serves 1/30 visually impaired students in our district. Thank you for City Council for listening and ensuring access to share my viewpoints as an educational leader in the community. Every generation leaves behind a legacy. What would a legacy be is determined by the people of that generation. What legacy do you want to leave behind? I'm in support of Bill 220918 because of the relationships that have been built with my students through the Cobs Creek Foundation community. My students will attend a safe stay at our educational facility that promotes self-esteem and positive racial identity. The relationships have been built from supports from funding for 8th graders, volunteering and providing support for graduations, weekly academic after-school clubs, and monthly Saturday programs. And I can't forget our mentoring programs with our middle schoolers. Investing in the revitalization is an investment in the community. Many students have a vision with their own eyes that their community is worth an investment now. Why should I have to search for the exposure for my students outside of Philadelphia, for an example, to experience golf or Safe Havens, take part in hobbies that they deserve? I recall one of my 3rd graders saying to me one day, noticing contractors and backhoes, "Are we getting something new across the street from our school?" I shared, "This is our hope." He smiled and said, "We can do it." The current climate in Philadelphia is deserving of this. Children deserve to be safe, especially with the gun violence in our city that we experience, and have access to beautiful, brand-new space. The project will create hundreds of job opportunities for residents and boost local economic values and partnerships in small local businesses to collaborate with the exposure. Think about what I said, the legacy. The legacy starts here. As I close today, consider what we stand by at OEC. We need to do what is best for children, not what is best for adults. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it.
The next speaker is Blaine Stoddard.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and to the Honorable City Council. My name is Blaine Stoddard. I run BFW Group, which is a project construction, project management company. I am here to support the Cobs Creek Foundation and the Cobs Creek Golf Course. It is formerly an abandoned 350-acre site that has been abandoned for almost 50 years, and the Cobs Creek Foundation has come into the city to help to revitalize that property, working in tandem with the City Recreation Department. It is a public golf course, not a private golf course, and they will begin, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, to take our kids off the street and build an education center so that our kids can do non-traditional sports and so that our kids can get educational enhancement. Some trees have been cut down, Mr. Chairman, but the trees should not have been there in the first place because it is a golf course. And so, they will be replanting 1,500 trees and 15,000 native plants back on this property. Last but not least, I'm going to say this. I got involved because, as you know, for 30 years, long before George Floyd, I was advocating for Black and Brown businesses to get work, and we are working with 200 Black and Brown and Latino businesses, construction-related businesses, architects and professional services, and contractors in the city to get work. And Cobs Creek was kind enough to call me, because I'm an advocate for Black and Brown businesses, to get work on construction projects. And so, the fact that they called me got me excited, because most times developers and nonprofits don't even call us back when we're trying to get work. So I could go on and on and on. Some people said that it's going to affect the environment and cause sickness in the community, but it's a golf course. This is the last thing I'm going to say. Nice neighborhoods get golf courses, like Bryn Mawr and Ardmore and Ballackinwood. And so, to have a public golf course in our neighborhood is a good thing and adds value to our neighbors and takes the kids off the street and helps us against gun violence. Now, I know there are some objectors-
Mr. Stoddard, Mr. Stoddard, your time is up.
Thank you so much. I was getting excited, Mr. President.
I understand. And I appreciate, I appreciate everyone's passion, but we have a significant list of people on the list today, and we really want to be able to get everybody in to testify. So please limit your conversation. When you see the red light, come on, please conclude your remarks. Thank you.
The next speaker is Radhi Hammett. Commenting on 220918.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Shamara Pitts, and I'm a co-manager-director at Philly Thrive, and I'm here to speak about the golf course in Cobs Creek. So now, first and foremost, I would like to applaud the Cobs Creek Foundation for any good work that they have done to help our community, as people have just testified to. And at the same time, my opposition to the golf course is the way it's been done. As the gentleman has just spoke, this has been abandoned for a long time. He said over 50 years. So now, when we come to the city and we ask for pieces of land or anything of monetary substance to support the community and the youth in our community to stop the gun violence, we don't get any treadway, right? But when, and this is just, not just the Cobs Creek Foundation, this is all over the city, because there's redevelopment and development going over all over the city. So I am opposed to it, because when people from outside the city come in the city, they are able to get the monies needed and the support needed for their projects. But when we, African-American men, who've been in Philadelphia our whole lives, when we come and we ask for grants and stuff like that, we get met with things like, "We got reimbursement grants," right? You got to pay the money. You got to bring your receipt for the money you spent. Did the Cobs Creek Foundation have to get reimbursement grants, or did they get money in the city budget? I think they got $3 million from Parks and Rec and a $3.4 million grant from the state. We ain't never got $6 million for nothing we tried to do. So I'm not against a golf course and diversity and things like that, but I'm for the youth. I'm for them. We've been cut out from the economics since I was their age, before I was their age, and we want to be cut in. So when they came in, now, they got a $60 million project going on. When they going to spend $6 million on them? When they going to $60 million to spend it on them? That's why I'm opposing it. I'm not opposing it just because it's a golf course. I'm opposing it because when you have, like Hillco for instance, you have Hillco. They in our community right now.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. They in our community right now, right now, they in our community. And they come and they get to make policy. When we come to the policymakers, we don't get to make no policy. How they get to make policy? To push us around.
Okay.
We ain't got no community involvement in that redevelopment. Every time we said in-person meeting, in-person meeting, they never showed up.
All right, sir. We got you. We got you. Thank you.
And they push us to the side.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. One second, one second.
Well, you keep saying, "One second." We got a, we got a lot of people that want to talk today.
I understand. I understand. I'm sorry. But I'm just saying, they get to push us around, and we've been here our whole lives. They've been here for two years.
I got you. Okay.
Come on, man. Come on, man. That ain't right.
Okay.
And City Council, I ain't never seen a City Council that represented African-Americans the way that we do now. Look how many African-Americans we got.
Sir, 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 you got it, really. You got it, like, because you keep saying that, you keep talking, you know. I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be respectful. Yeah, but we can follow up, all right? We can't, we can't go on and on. Try and be respectful, all right?
All right. I'm closing up.
We follow up. We'll follow up.
Please, listen to us, man. Please. Thank you. Sorry for going overtime.
Thank you, sir. We'll follow up. Thank you.
The next speaker is Fred Sterry. Commenting on 220918.
Thank you. It's Fred Stein, S-T-I-N-E. Thank you. And I worked for over 10 years now. I've been a board member with the Eastwick Friends and Neighbors Coalition, and for over 30 years, I've worked with the Delaware Riverkeeper Network, which is a nonprofit environmental organization where I help design, plant, and maintain urban forests and repair and buffers. For the Friends and Neighbors and the Delaware Riverkeeper, I urge council to vote no against this bill, 220918. Cutting down more trees and clearing the land of natural vegetation could contribute worsening flooding, could contribute worsening air pollution, worsening heat island effect, and other public health impacts to all city residents, but particularly residents of Overbrook, Cobs Creek, and Eastwick. According to Philadelphia's own Philly Tree Philly, trees are one of the best investments we can make in the future of our city. When properly cared for, urban trees provide valuable and vital services like clean air, increased property values, peaceful neighborhoods. Planting and maintaining trees addresses all three of the pillars of sustainability, environment, economics, and society. The Cobs Creek Foundation is not replacing- The Cobb's Creek Foundation is not replacing the public health and environmental value of the trees they're cutting down. They are cutting and clearing thousands of matured plants, trees, including the 500 mature heritage trees already cut down. They're not replacing them at a one-to-one. They're cutting down 24-inch diameter trees and planting two-inch caliber replacement. It's not a one-to-one. In the presentation to the Arts Commission, the developer shows that on the driving range and youth golf area alone, just in that one area, which is about 13 acres, which is part of the bill, in the steep slope area, they will be cutting 150 heritage trees, and a heritage tree is 24 inches in diameter. According to their plan, they will be replanting 62 trees. They're cutting down 150 large trees, which provide all these benefits that Tree Philly has advocated for, and they're planting 62.
Please go wrap it up.
Thank you. And, and, and my last comment will be, they anticipate it's going to take 20 years for those new little trees to grow to provide the same ecological and economic value that the trees they're cutting down. We urge everyone, on balance, this is going to benefit wealthy outsiders more than it will benefit the residents of Philadelphia.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is George Guy. Commenting in on a resolution that will be introduced, that is introduced and will be adopted today by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm George Guy, and I'm here on behalf of the Full of Tennis Club. I'm here to thank Councilman Bass for this resolution that you sponsored. I'd also like to thank you personally for the help that you and the former Councilman Belinda Reynolds gave us a few years ago, where we were in dire need of your assistance. And you came through for us. We appreciate it. I'd also like to thank Catherine Gilmore Richardson, okay? And our club is in your district. Now, for the sake of full disclosure, Full of Tennis Club, we've always considered to be the oldest fully-owned black tennis club in America because we actually own the land, as opposed to our esteemed friends and colleagues at Woodford. That land is owned by the city. Anyway, PTC was founded by people of color, so they had a place that they considered their own. We're in historic Germantown. Tennis is a great game, and our goal is remote tennis for underserved inner-city youth, okay? And that's our goal and our primary mission. We have seven well-maintained, beautiful clay courts. Now, clay is different than hard courts. It's great, it's great for the body, it's softer. And it's a great facility and a great place for youth, young and old. As a matter of fact, I think all of you should take up tennis. If you, if you, if you still play, you should come join us. And if you're thinking about joining, taking up tennis, you should come around and see. So I look forward that all of you will visit us in Germantown. It's a great club, and I'd like to thank City Council and Councilman Bass one more time for this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Alexa Ross, commenting on 220918.
Morning. Good morning, everybody. My name is Alexa Ross. I did, yeah, hearing that there is a cap of five speakers for and against, I wanted to give a chance anyone that is opposed to the Cobb's Creek overlay bill, if you have a, if you want to stand up or raise your hand, because I know a lot of speakers were turned away, just a moment to show, show those who were turned away. I'm with Philly Thrive. I've also been on the Board of Eastwick Friends and Neighbors from 2013 to 2015. I'm here today to talk about the fact that corporate profits are at an all-time high, right? So in the last, the third quarter of 2022, corporate profits were $2 trillion. Meanwhile, inflation for the everyday person is at a 40-year-high, right? And so when we look at the McGuire family, billionaires who are part of the Cobb's Creek Foundation, who the city allows to lease a $90 million property, so this, this land is valued at $90, $90 million, and they lease it for $1 for 70 years. So clearly, things are severely out of balance. And I implore the City Council leadership to help restore the balance because the flooding that's going to come as a result of all this tree, tree loss and, and the way that these old-growth trees actually provide a kind of support for erosion that new trees cannot provide, right? And we have to just stop handing out corporate, you know, giving corporations tax breaks. Also, Hillco Redevelopment Partners got a tax break. The first thing they came to Philly and did was get, get their taxes waived, their city taxes that would go to the school district waived as part of Keystone Opportunity Zone. So an economy where we keep giving billionaires major tax breaks and write them into city budgets, meanwhile, Philadelphians are facing double the prices at the grocery store for food, makes no sense whatsoever. And the burden really is not on us to make an argument as to why this makes no sense, but the burden is really on you all to explain, you know, under what economy, under what city where we care about children and we care about the betterment of everybody, does it make sense to be cutting this much money for billionaires and corporations?
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Linda Smith.
Good morning. My name is Linda Colwell Smith. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll try again. My name is Linda Colwell Smith. I'm interim co-chair of the Friends of the Free Library of Philadelphia. We work to support the free library with our advocacy and efforts in the community. And I'm up here today to thank Councilmember Brooks and City Council for honoring one of our own, our own Ms. Betty Buford. She's been a member of the Friends, and she's one of our board members. She's a longtime community advocate, and she's had at least 25 years with us fighting for her beloved Queen Memorial Branch. And I've had the honor of working with her to keep our entire library system open in 2005, 2008, 2011, and we're still fighting to this day. One of Betty's biggest strengths is she speaks truth to power, and she's not afraid to talk. And one, she saw, for instance, she saw a need in her community for a place for teens to go safely, to talk and to recreate and just to socialize in good fellowship. So she founded one of the first teen centers in a Free Library of Philadelphia branch in the city, and it opened the day before the pandemic shut the library system down. But I'm happy to report it's back open, and she's fighting for it again. All right. Okay. I mean, Betty is an inspiration to us all. She recognizes that Queen Memorial Branch and every single branch of the Free Library, where they're the heart and the soul of their communities, that they're a safe place for seniors, for families, for kids, and that they're worth fighting for. I'm honored to be standing beside her. I hope to do it for many more years to come, and I know our group feels the same way. Again, thank you, Councilmember Brooks. Thank you, City Council, for honoring our Ms. Betty.
Thanks. Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Enrique Hervada, commenting on 220918.
Morning. Thank you. Good morning. My name is Enrique Hervada. I'm the COO of the Cobb's Creek Foundation. I thank you for the opportunity to address. As I stated before, we're not a corporation, we're not a developer, we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit working in partnership with the City of Philadelphia, Parks and Recreation, the Philadelphia Water Department, and I'm here to address the bill today regarding the overlay district for Cobb's Creek. The ordinance is essential for moving our project forward as minor steep slope disruption is required for the creek restoration plan. Restoring the failing creek is a requirement for our lease with the city and will not only benefit the golf course and surrounding community, it will provide no increase in downstream flooding. As previously stated, we have followed every applicable agency's requirements, including but not limited to the Army Corps of Engineers, the Department of Environmental Protection, Philadelphia Arts Commission, Planning Commission, and Water Department, and will continue to do so. The Philadelphia Planning Commission unanimously approved moving forward this ordinance at our meeting on January 19th. We submitted a letter recently from Patrick Patterson that shows the effects of the project. Recently, seven amendments were added to the bill, and we are, they're all environmental amendments that were required from talking to the neighbors and things that they wanted, and we agreed to all seven of those amendments to the bill. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
The next speaker is Lawrence Smolowicz, commenting on 220918.
Hello. My name is Lawrence Smolowicz. I'm a volunteer with the Cobb's Creek Environmental Justice. I live downstream from the golf course in the Cobb's Creek neighborhood where I organize trash cleanups and bird walks. First of all, we welcome the amendments. They are a step in the right direction. Unfortunately, the amendments do not resolve the core problem with the bill. The bill still gives a developer free rein to cut down trees on any steep slope within the 350-acre premises. The new time limit on the exemption has no practical value. The developer will cut down all the trees at once, long before the exemption ends in July 2024. Moreover, the amendments do not address the fundamental lack of transparency. We still do not know basic details about the developer's plans. How many trees do they plan to cut down? Do they include any heritage trees? How will they prevent erosion, landslides, and sediment pollution in our waterways after they cut down the trees whose roots literally hold the earth in place? We do not have these answers because the community has not had the opportunity to pose those questions. Normally, a developer who wants to cut down trees on steep slopes must apply for a zoning variance. As part of that process, a developer must meet with the community at the local RCO, explain their plans, and answer the tough questions. There is no reason why the developer can't apply for a zoning variance here. In fact, they originally did apply for one, but they withdrew it in March 2022 before they met with the local RCO. When the Planning Commission asked the developer why they didn't pursue a zoning variance, their chief operating officer replied, "Because our attorney told us that a legislative exemption is cleaner." Well, the developer's attorney is right. It is cleaner to get a legislative exemption than meet with the community, explain your plans, and answer tough questions. It is cleaner to bypass community input because democracy is messy. But whether it's convenient for a developer or not, the community has a right to give input and be heard on the issue, on, on the use and development of our public lands, especially when the development potentially threatens our environment, health, and safety. City Council should not get into the business of enabling developers to avoid community input by carving out special exemptions to our local environmental protections. So we respectfully ask you to remove the steep slope exemption and let the developer apply for a zoning variance like they should have in the first place. At the very least, do not vote on this bill until the developer does what they should have done in the first place. Go to the Overbrook Park Civic Association RCO, bring your blueprints, bring your environmental assessments that you say you have-
Please conclude.
-and answer the community's questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please, will you be the next person to testify? The next speaker is Edison Frazier, commenting on 220918.
My name is Edison Frazier. I'm with Philly Thrive. I oppose this bill, 220918. Now, this is my whole thing. All right, keep on hearing the talk. I'm keeping on hearing everybody talk about education and stuff like that for the park on Cobb's Creek. First of all, most of them kids that's doing the shooting ain't even in school. They out there, you go out there right now, they out there right now. So our program is to get to the kids and change their thinking. Like, we keep on coming to these meetings and something. Gardier Office, she reached out to me, her secretary, wanted to talk to me, but ain't nobody get back to me yet. My program is, what we trying to do is save the youth and stuff like that. By cutting down the trees, which, what is you doing? And I done talked to you, Jones. What, what is you doing? You, um, when you cut down the trees, you blocking the shade, so our gas and our electric bill gonna go up. And somebody just got shot around here last night, too. So what, I live right down the street, and the population is 30,000, and 80% is black. They didn't go around the neighborhood, Enrique, and, and, and tell, when y'all put this golf course up, y'all gonna pesticides and all that stuff, gonna lead to our community and something like that. I done came, I done came to you, Jones, so I'm asking you, can I have a meeting with you so I could put my program on the other side? All them dirt bikes that's on the streets, we want to get them on the field like that. They, there's no, there's nowhere for them to ride. And the reason why we took this sign down, because they already said they was in the park already. So we keep on coming to the, I oppose this bill because, I mean, y'all cut down trees and it was illegal. And then last week, you said that you, you was gonna held up on the bill. Now, it's like, come on, Jones. I live in, I live right down the street from this community, man. I live right down the street from this community. They want to come in here, golf is for rich people. Golf is for rich, is they gonna, is it free to play golf? Is it free? I want to know if it's free because I want to sign up right now if it's free. So I'm asking you, Jones.
Please conclude.
I'm asking you, Gardier. I'm saying, you, you reached out to me. You said you, you reached out to me. I got, I got the text right here on my, on the phone. Call me to your office, let's talk. Let's talk, let's talk, Jones. All right. If we gonna-
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
If we gonna coincide, I'm on the other side, Jones. You know what I get. You gave me money to do my thing. You gave me money, I want to help the youth. You know what I'm saying? I want to help the youth. You gave me money to do my, I'm tired of seeing these black kids dying and all this stuff. These corporations and stuff is coming in here.
Please conclude.
You know what I'm saying? So I want, I want to know, can I have a meeting with you, Jones?
Please have respect for everybody who wants to speak.
Come on, call me, Jones, like you call me, man. I ain't trying to put you on the, on the table and that like that. Come on, man. You gave me, you gave me money to do my program, but I ain't get all of it. They got $6 million to do it.
Councilmember Gardier, did you want to?
I thank Edison for his comment. I'm always willing to meet with any constituent, but not those that come to the office in a threatening manner, particularly with female staff.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. Clerk, can you please read the next person to testify? The next speaker is Erica Zoura. Is Erica here?
Hi. My name is Erica Zoura. I'm a member of the citywide Friends of the Free Library. Linda introduced the group. Most of you know the Friends of the Free Library, but I came up to speak on a little bit of a personal note. I want to say I'm kind of new to Philadelphia, haven't been there, haven't been here that many years. I want to say that Betty is Philadelphia. I found that out. She is definitely Philadelphia. She's a crown and the jewel of Philadelphia. When I came here, I was lucky enough to meet her not that long after, through the Friends of the Free Library. I want to say she's a mentor. I want to say that Philadelphia City Council and the mayor know you better listen to Betty. Thank you, Betty.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Clerk, please read the next person to testify. The next speaker is Lynn Landis, commenting on 210913.
Good morning. I'm Lynn Landis, founder of HealthAlertPhilly.org. I support Resolution 210913, but today I'm here to talk about vaccines. For all FDA-approved vaccines, including COVID shots, there is a Section 13 to the manufacturer's package insert, which admits that the vaccine has not been evaluated for its potential to cause cancer, damage DNA, or impair fertility. Yet despite this lack of minimal testing, our federal health authorities continue to maintain that these vaccines are safe and effective. Many people got the vaccine, the COVID vaccine, thinking that they were FDA-approved, but it appears that those approved vaccines were not made available to the public. What the public got and is still getting are experimental vaccines under an emergency use authorization, meaning little effective safety testing was conducted. To date, the COVID shots are the most harmful and deadly vaccines in the history of the CDC, with soaring numbers of people suffering from blood clots, strokes, heart attacks, and other sudden illnesses. The public is becoming increasingly aware that vaccines in general are resulting in widespread harm and death. Countless books have been written and studies published that offer overwhelming evidence the vaccines did not stop the deadly contagions of the past. Instead, new sewer systems, water treatment facilities, and better nutrition did that. Even polio was most likely caused by DDT, a paralyzing insecticide, not by a virus. When DDT was faced- When DDT was phased out, polio subsided. In fact, the leading cause of polio today is the polio vaccine itself. And that's what many people don't understand about vaccines. Some can spread the very illnesses they claim to prevent. It's called vaccine shedding. So is Big Pharma spreading illnesses through vaccines rather than preventing them? It certainly looks that way. You can learn more at HealthAlertPhilly.org. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Clerk, next person to testify. The next speaker is Christopher Gladstone.
Good morning. Good morning, President Clark, Councilwoman Cindy Bass, my councilperson, Councilwoman Kathy Gilmore Richardson, and the rest of the city council. My name is Christopher Gladstone Booth, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the Woodford Tennis Club. Woodford Tennis Club was founded during the civil rights era in 1958 by eight working-class people who decided not to wait for inclusion but to actively seek a place that they could call their home. Divine intervention is what many of us believe sent George Logan, a police officer in the 14th precinct and one of Woodford's founding members, to drive up a driveway in Fairmount Park to find an overgrown piece of property that vaguely resembled tennis courts. Upon Officer Logan's inquiry, he did discover that it had been abandoned by the city some 20 years before, and it was a part of Fairmount Park. Royal Sims, who is currently the president of the Veterans Administration here in Philadelphia and one of our founding members, cut a deal with the city. The city agreed to lease that abandoned discarded property to the tennis club for $1 a year for 50 years. And needless to say, we are well into our second lease. It was a part, at that point, the members bought the house and the adjoining property to the tennis courts in 1958. What is Woodford? Woodford is legacy. My father was a founder. I'm a board member. My daughter is currently a member. Woodford has turned down a number of nationally-ranked players, including my daughter, and it continues to support players with professional aspirations. Woodford is home, home to countless years of youth tennis programs exposing African-American children to the game of tennis. And finally, Woodford is history. It truly is apropos on this second day of February to recognize Woodford and its contributions to African-American history. But let it not go unrecognized that Woodford also is an integral part, was and is an integral part of Philadelphia history. When you look up little-known history facts about the city of Philadelphia, there is a possibility you'll see a picture of 424 East Worcester Street, better known as the Woodford Tennis Club. Thank you, Councilmen, for this resolution. It is deeply appreciated.
Thank you for your testimony. Mr. Clerk, please read the next person. The next speaker is Nasir Williams.
Good morning. My name is Nasir Williams. I'm currently a sophomore at Secofer Freedom Academy Charter School, and I'm here to speak on my experience with MES, Marvin's Educational Services. I've been around since the very beginning of MES. I've enjoyed participating in MES as a student athlete and someone who always wanted better for myself. MES helped shape myself and my parents into better students and helped us excel in the classroom. Marvin made sure I got help with any of my work whenever I needed it, and he started to train myself and a few other students in basketball while still tutoring us. MES kept us off the streets and motivated to be great men and influencers in our communities. Marvin and I appreciate everything you do for us and being a man of the community. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Mr. Clerk.
Good morning. My name is George Lane. I'm currently a sophomore at Secofer Freedom Academy Charter School. So I'm here today to speak on my experience of growing through MES. When asked what MES is exactly, I always have to include as murder in the organization, business, or team. It's a family. Through MES, I gained a lot of lifelong connections with my other fellow teammates or brothers that grew through MES as well. We had the opportunity of being mentored by two amazing model role models, Brother Marvin and Brother Ryan, who still got us in a positive direction today. Being completely honest, I wouldn't be the student or young brother I am today without the help of MES. Year in and year out, I could probably say that I have been honored, I have been honored with straight A's every semester since I was first introduced to Brother Marvin, which when I was a first grader. In addition, my brothers present today are honor students just as well as me. Since day one, Brother Marvin, Ryan, has always attempted to give us so much attention to the value of education, the reason being the importance of how much an asset educated minority can be. As stated before, I'm probably grateful to say I grew through MES. Without MES, I wouldn't be who I am today. I dedicate every accomplishment to MES and Brother Marvin. He started, he been around since ground zero, and this recognition can give us how much, how much thankful I am for him today.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony. Mr. Clerk, please read the next person to speak. The next person to speak, Mr. Chairman, is Marvin Dutton.
I feel like I'm back at a basketball game, being called out for the starting lineup. Marvin Dutton. My name is Marvin Dutton. I'm the CEO of Marvin's Education Services. If you hear me clap once, if you hear me clap twice, that's something that we do in the classroom, just to kind of get your attention. There's an African proverb that says, "You can't thank the person that crossed the bridge without thanking the people that built the bridge." So I'm very thankful for my family. I'm very thankful for my students. Can we all give them a round of applause again, please? Thank you to Councilman Isaiah Thomas and City Council for honoring MES as we celebrate our 10-year anniversary. 10 years of hard work, 10 years of commitment, 10 years of sacrifice. It's my honor to give back to the community, to impact the life of a child, to impact a family, to positively impact the community. And so I'm extremely thankful. There is a saying that goes like, "When spiders unite, they can tie up a lion." So together, we can do some amazing things. So again, thank you, City Council. I really appreciate you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Clerk, please read the name of our next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Valerie Susan McLeod. First, I want to thank my councilman, Kenyatta Johnson, for the resolution on urging the United States Congress to pass H.R. 1280, the George Floyd Justice and Policy Act. But I'm here this morning to stand with the rest of, if everyone can just stand up, who's here for Ms. Betty Buford? So I want to thank Councilwoman, Councilwoman Brooks for honoring Ms. Betty. Betty is my neighbor for the 1300 block of Garnett Street. We met about 15 years ago. I was serving as the block captain for about 20 years. And every time it was time to go out and work, Ms. Betty was there. I could always depend on her. So I wanted, I wanted to come out and just honor her for her passion for the community because that's what we need, more people who are passionate about the community, passionate about the work, and determined to get the work done. So thank you, Ms. Betty.
Thank you. Chief Clerk, can you please read the next person to speak?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Maria Ortiz. Maria Ortiz, I'm here to honor Betty Buford. She is the only one in our community that stands up for us, fight for us, whether the person like their opinion or not. One thing I can say, Betty, you are phenomenal. Don't let nobody take that from you. You are a phenomenal woman, a woman that speaks the truth, the woman that knows what the community needs. And more leadership in our community need to listen what our community needs. Like Betty Buford, she always did to help the people less fortunate. I was in a situation a couple of years ago, Betty came to my aid. You know, it's funny, when you have leadership in the community, they don't even help you, but you have people like Betty Buford is willing to help you. Betty's there for me now. I'm at a struggle, staying still with my daughter. She has cancer, double mastectomy, been to service four times, but Betty's always been there for me through the right and the wrong and the indifferent. Betty, thank you for being a friend. Thank you for being a leader in the community, and thank you for speaking and upholding on what you stand for and what you say. Thank you, Ms. Buford.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speaker is Ogbona Higgins commenting on two three oh oh four four.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Ogbona Higgins. I'm going to be speaking about the bill two three zero zero four four. Even though I understand the sentiments of wanting to condemn the Union League for giving the honor to the governor of Florida, I think there are far more institutions and organizations and people that should be condemned in the city of Philadelphia. We have a school district that has consistently failed our children, and the education data shows that six of 10 children who graduate cannot read, write, or do math on a high school level. 18 years ago, Dr. Ed Robinson was consulted by the School District of Philadelphia to infuse African history into 17 books that were used by the students in the district. And why is this relevant? It is relevant because the infusion has been proven to teach not only African-American students about their history, but all students of the greatness of African culture, which is rarely done today. It was also proven that when African-American children learn their history, they are far less likely to be violent, and their overall grades improve. If this infusion of African history was infused into the curriculum, it is very likely that the violence that we see in our city would not be occurring. So yes, condemn the Union League, but also condemn the School District of Philadelphia, which by the way, is the only district in the state that does not have an elected school board. And I was just given a text today because I made a post in Facebook, on Facebook, that Philadelphia has not had an elected school board since 1867. So I'm saying to you, condemn the Urban League, but let's do right by our children in Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your testimony. The next speaker is Jonathan Liebavich commenting on two three oh oh four four.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Jonathan Liebavich, and yeah, absolutely, condemn the Union League, for sure. This is a song that's definitely about that bill number that you just said. They cut down our trees and they put up a golfing course. And the billionaires behind it showed no remorse. Don't it always seem to go that you gotta be a rich white man to get anything done in this town? They cut down our trees and they put up the golfing course. They want to cut corners, bypass the RCOs. But the people won't stand for that, oh, no, 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 no. But don't it always seem to go that the billionaires get millions of dollars in tax breaks? They cut down our trees and they put up a golfing course. Hey Curtis Jones, quit hanging with CCF. They pay a dollar in rent to the city WTF. Yeah, don't it always seem to go that you gotta make thousands of dollars in illegal campaign contributions to get your zoning permits approved? They cut down our trees and they put up a golfing course. Late last night, I heard an awful sound. And a big yellow tractor tore all our trees to the ground. And don't it always seem to go that backroom deals are how business is done? They cut down our trees and they put up a golfing course. And I'm gonna keep on singing about it till my voice is hoarse. Because the billionaires behind it show no remorse. But the people showed up today, we came out in force. To say you gotta play fair if you want your golfing course. Thank you.
So for your information, in the event you want to use it as an audition tape, Channel 64 runs this over and over, so. But thank you for your, thank you for your testimony, sir. Next speaker.
The next, the next speaker is.
Hold on, Mr. Decker. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I want to also just take a moment, a personal privilege, to acknowledge my colleague, Councilman Kendra Brooks, for acknowledging and honoring a longtime Point Breeze legend, community hero, Ms. Betty Buford. Ms. Buford, can you stand? Ms. Buford is a part of the Concerned Citizens of Point Breeze, as well as the Queen Memorial, Friends of the Queen Memorial Library. Most of you in this body know I'm born and raised in Point Breeze, South Philadelphia, like, all my life. And so I know Ms. Buford growing up as a young man in South Philadelphia, and so I just want to commend her for her hard work and her dedication to improving the quality of life of the residents in Point Breeze. And she has no problem speaking truth to power and always speaks with a sense of passion and commitment for doing which right on behalf of the people in Point Breeze, South Philadelphia. So I want to give you your flowers as well today as a co-sponsor, Ms. Betty, and tell you to keep up the good work and God bless. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker. The next speaker is Melissa Robbins commenting on two three oh oh four four.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Council President, members of council, and taxpayers. My name is Melissa Robbins. I'll be commenting on resolution two three zero zero four four, sponsored by Councilmember Sharon Vaughn and Councilmember Kenyatta Johnson. I'd like to say thank you for everyone who participated in the press conference last Tuesday denouncing the honoring of Governor Ron DeSantis, as well as the protests. What many of you do not know is he left there and then was honored by one John McNeeseby, president of FOP Lodge. What does the Union League of Philadelphia and the FOP leader or president have in common? A history of continued white supremacy and public anti-blackness. Most of you don't know that on the election day, the people who voted over there by the FOP that sits close to Councilmember Brian O'Neill's office, the black people that voted over there heard the N-word, monkey word, gorilla word. I'm here to say Governor DeSantis represents a part of American history that is behind us. And anyone who agrees with that way of thinking or sub- us, and anyone who agrees with that way of thinking or submit to that way of thinking, you are a racist, you are anti-blackness, and the days of subjugating black people are over. Our city is 44% black people. Just like the gentleman said, we have awful graduation rates, awful matriculation rates here in the city of Philadelphia, eds. and meds. Why are our kids not in those classrooms? Why are our schools not fully funded? How long do you intend to beat a dead horse in order to continue the life of white supremacy that requires the continued subjugation and oppression of black people? We see it, we feel it. Our poverty is us, our children, our inability to own a home, start a business, be educated, travel while being black. You get your golf courses, you get your special clubs, we get nothing. You criminalize our black males as they die in the streets, but there's enough land for a dirt bike park so they can ride free, generate money, perform, they're excellent, they're brilliant. How many more years must black people suffer? How many? How many? I don't prepare to do it anymore. So for the black people who want to get paid off, let me tell you something, it's a whole lot of people like Melissa Robbins. I ain't for sale. You sold my ancestors. Stop taking money to benefit in the moment while your people suffer. Look around the city, look at Atlanta. Get up off your butts, work together, and bring black people up. We want money. We don't want your apology, we don't want your scholarships, we don't want your meals, we don't want your hamburgers, and we don't want your goddamn pictures. Invest into our communities. Give us access to the money. What was the American Rescue Plan, the Inflation Reduction Act, Build Back Better? Where are those millions of dollars? Harrisburg is sitting on 12 billion. Give that money to black people. We earned it, we deserve it. Our ancestors built this country on our backs, and we're tired of anti-blackness and racism.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Robbins.
The next speaker is Tiffany Green, commenting on 230064.
Betty already warned me, this is her day, so I won't start anything. Tiffany Green, I'm here to honor Betty, Betsy Buford, all right? I want to talk about real quick because she is the quintessential activist. An activist is a person who campaigns to bring about political and social change or to hold elected officials accountable, which many of you are here today, and I want to say I give out thanks to all of you. But the point of it is, an activist has to be about purpose, passion, a love for people, and pressing forward, and committed. Talk about purpose. I met Betty through a long-term activist, Mamie Nichols, 90 years old. Mamie called me, said she's going against a billion-dollar company, can you do the groundwork? When I came there, Betty, she introduced me to Betty, and Betty says she wanted to help out, and we went forward, we won that campaign. After that, Betty was there, they wanted to close down the libraries, Betty came out, we went over there, we found out, we've been off that campaign. At that campaign, one day we're supposed to have outdoors, uh-huh, City Hall have a protest. Not too many showed up because it was raining terribly. Betty called me and said, Tiffany, you ready? I said, it's raining. She said, a little water gonna melt you? I said, I don't know. She said, be down there. So I come down there, she's standing there with her grandson with the signs. There's only about 10 of us at that point because people didn't show up. We're going around and around and around, the major media show up. All of a sudden Stan and his wife said, we're gonna take this, take this, a gift up to Mayor Michael Nutter. At that point, but he said, who with me? Betty stands up and said, I'm with you, Stan, I'm going with you. So they go up to Michael Nutter's office and take him this call to represent if he closed down the library. At that point, that story ran on Channel 6. I just want to say Betty has been here from the beginning. If it's snowing, she's there with her boots. If it's raining, she's there with her umbrella. And I want to say it's been a pleasure to serve with Betty Buford. When they tried to close the recreation centers, she was there. When they tried to close down, when they closed down Smith, she was there. We are activists, and we do what we do, and I want to say that I'm glad we honor her while she's living at this point, so she can hear from all of us that we really appreciate Betty Buford. And I want to say that I think a vote today for that resolution is a vote for someone you know who have given themselves freely, voluntarily, and that's what we all need to be about at this particular point. And Betty, I took a chance down here with all this high-risk COVID, and you know I did four years. And I want to say thank you for your support, and also, I just want to say, can we reinstate the virtual option for people who are high-risk and do not want to come down here to City Council? We deserve to have that alternative. It's still put forth, all right, and you should provide that to us, because as long as COVID is out here, we should not have to risk our lives to come down here for a three-minute comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
The final speaker, Mr. President, is Catherine Hicks, commenting on 230044.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Catherine Hicks, and I'm here representing the Philadelphia branch of the NAACP on behalf of the Resolution 230044. Thank you, Council President, the council, and the public for allowing me to be here today to speak on this. I am here because we stood in front of the Union League more than a week ago in protest of Ron, the Florida Governor, Ron DeSantis, being honored with the highest honor that that league could give. We are in total disbelief and appalled that he, who disrespected us as the black and brown community, was taking out black history studies in our schools. He is known for being a racist, he has brought out the woke, stay woke noun on being, looking at blacks and browns as not being, not being good enough for us to teach in schools, for us to have that type of curriculum. I denounce that. We, with the Philadelphia branch, NAACP, denounce that. Those who stood with us denounce that. I am in support of this resolution, and I feel that we have to stand up and say that this is not something that we are going to have happen in our city. We are not going to allow our city to be smeared by somebody, the Florida Governor DeSantis, who comes here and then we acknowledge him with an award. So I feel that we all, we all should stand and denounce this, ask the Union League, we have demanded that they rescind that, and I'm asking that they rescind that honor because he does not deserve it. Our students have the right to know their history. Our black and brown children in schools deserve to know their history. And so I am in total support of this resolution, and I ask everyone who stood with us that day, which included Black Women's Leadership Council, the Black Clergy, NOW, and a number of organizations, and the community, the large crowd that stood out there, we ask that you all hear this and that you do continue with this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Is that it, Mr. Decker?
There are no other speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comments session for today. We will now consider the bills and resolutions on the second reading and final passes' calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 210434.
A resolution calling on the city of Philadelphia to implement minimum force training for all law enforcement officers.
Chair recognizes Councilman O for a motion on the resolution.
Thank you, Council President. I move the Resolution Number 210434 to be taken from the table.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor of removing from the table? Those opposed? Eyes have it. Resolution Number 210434 is now... Councilman O, you want to call that up for a vote now?
No, Council President, I'll wait till next week.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Decker, 230039.
A resolution urging the United States...
Hold on one second. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to ask the sponsor of Resolution 210434, Councilmember O, if he could just give us an explanation. He said he was going to wait until next week so that we understand what he's seeking to accomplish. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. This was brought up before, and I think it has sat for a while. I think the Tyree Nichols case once again raises the issue of training. We authorize police officers, we train them, we give them lethal force, they are able and trained to use maximum force. They should be trained to use minimum force. People think that comes naturally, it does not. And I'll just give a quick example. If you and I are engaged in a physical confrontation and we are equally, of equal strength, you give 100%, I give 100%. But when it is unequal, when my 50% is too much for you, I may feel that I am not using much force on you, but you may feel it's quite different. When people are excited, when their adrenaline is going, it does take training. People also, naturally, when they feel their life is in danger, they get a lot of adrenaline, their blood sugars rush, that is what's supposed to happen. And so the measurement of the danger is always enhanced, and it does take training to understand and to measure what the danger actually is. That's true of anyone who does any type of combat sport, from wrestling to boxing to kickboxing, you learn that over a period of time. However, when you are using 100% of your strength, and I'm using 60%, but there are five of me, when there's five people using 60% on one person, I may just think I'm holding your arm, another person may think they're just holding your leg, but the other three people are doing things we don't know. Maybe someone accidentally hit you in the throat, maybe someone has a knee in your solar plexus. Just even without the force itself, the excitement that occurs, the adrenaline, the stress, the anxiety, if you have any type of situation, you could be seriously injured from there. It is the responsibility of the city to properly train those it authorizes to use deadly force, maximum force, and other types of force. It is good for the officers, it's good for the public. The failing of what happened in Memphis is the responsibility of each one of those five police officers and everyone who's watching. But the other failure is the failure of the city of Memphis and its police department in not training those it holds responsible. Now they are arrested, they have been fired, and they will first face murder charges. This happens time and time again, and there should be training. It just, it happens in many police departments around the world and in this country. There is no reason not to train people, they should be trained, it does not come naturally. So I put this forward once again in response to what happens. Thank you.
Good, Councilwoman?
Thank you, Councilwoman O. Thank you.
Thank you. So that will be on the calendar next week, available before you vote. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, get back to 230039.
A resolution urging the United States Congress to pass the Gun Records Restoration and Preservation Act, introduced last session by U.S. Senator Bob Menendez and Congresswoman Barbara Lee, which would repeal the Tiarq amendments, whose provisions have hampered efforts to address gun trafficking by, among other things, identifying, holding accountable irresponsible gun dealers and owners.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I want to commend you for offering this resolution because oftentimes when we talk about the issue of gun violence, we never get answers to the question, where are the guns coming from? So many young people in the city of Philadelphia and all throughout this nation, particularly in urban neighborhoods, have access to illegal guns. And so I just want to commend you for sponsoring this resolution because this also goes to the heart of how we address the issue of gun violence, and that's access to illegal guns. And with that being said, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, 230044.
A resolution condemning the Union League of Philadelphia for bestowing its highest honor, the gold medal, upon Florida Governor Ron DeSantis.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. Let the record reflect, there's one opposition. Chair recognizes, did you want to be recognized, Councilman O'Neill, or did you just want to? I got, I got, I got. Councilman O'Neill, did you just want to vote? Okay. There are two, two noes. Thank you. Chair can recognize, Councilman Johnson, you good? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Decker, 230045.
A resolution urging the Pennsylvania General Assembly to introduce legislation allowing cities and counties of the first class to set their own minimum wage laws.
Chair recognizes Councilman Harity for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it, and the motion carries. Resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, 230046.
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 3001 Martha Street, located in the first council manic district.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 220918AA.
An ordinance cementing Chapter 14, 500 of the Philadelphia zoning code entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by creating a new subsection entitled Cobb's Creek Golf Course Overlay District.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your understanding. Thank you for putting me in touch with the proper organizations to seek guidance about environmental justice. It is not a perfect thing, but it is a overall good thing for the benefit of the community. We are talking about, in context, and for the record, people have a right to speak, but they don't have a right to the facts. There is a golf course in Cobb's Creek that was abandoned pretty much for 15 years. We've had deceased bodies taken out of there, we've had missile silos installed in there, we've had homeless encampments and people need places to stay, but none of these environmental folk were a part of those discussions. Freedom to speak, but not freedom of the facts. Not $1 of government money from this city is going into the restoration of that golf course. That's 60 million plus that we can count, raised by people who care about the historic nature of the first integrated golf course in the city of Philadelphia. I don't know where these people were when I first was elected, and we walked through the neighborhoods and collected golf balls because of the broken fences that were in people's windshields and in their homes. I don't know where these people were when we went through infestations of lanternflies, infestation of possums and raccoons in the community adjacent, Overbrook Park, Overbrook, Carroll Park. But it is important to know that we, in spite of that, are willing to continue the dialogue. I learned a lot about environmental justice. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you. And I'm committed... And I'm committed to making sure that that process continues in spite of this vote. But in context, Mr. President, we've been doing this for 10 years. We, we started this under the Nutter administration because we realized then that for all of our collective golf courses, the City of Philadelphia only received $15,000 annually in revenue, had exceeding expenses to keep these public golf courses open. And so now we have an opportunity to get three teams financed within, you know, the golf courses area. Golf teams, you have a commitment from them to do dozens of kids every year that will learn golf course management, which leads to careers, pathways out of poverty. So you have to weigh the good with the bad, and the good far exceeds the bad. I have brought for you, and Councilman Squilla was excited to finally see emails supporting the golf course. Many of people in Overbrook Park can't come down here. Why? Because they're at work. But I'd like to submit this as a part of the record to show that there is substantial support. And we have had dozens of meetings, and we know what my district needs. And I respect everybody downstream, I'm going to speak to everybody downstream, but charity begins at home, in the 4th Councilmatic District. And I would call for the support and passage of this bill looking at the greater good for the City of Philadelphia. And trust the fact that I will not stop talking to environmental groups. I will, this is, this, this has two amendments already because of things we've heard, things we've agreed upon, things we've considered a part of the legislation. That won't stop after today. So I thank you, Member Johnson, I thank you, Member Richardson, I thank you, Member Goodyear, and all members of council for asking the tough questions and making us find the right answers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Johnson, did you wish to speak? You good? Thank you. This bill hadn't been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? And Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Brooks.
Aye.
Councilman Driscoll.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gaudier.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Aye.
Councilman Harity.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lozada.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neill.
Aye.
Councilman Phillips.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Thomas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Vaughn.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye, the ayes are 16 and the ayes are zero. Majority of all members present pointing in affirmative, the bill passes. Thank you. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings examining the COVID-19 pandemic's impacts on black-owned businesses and the disparity in rates of closure, introduced today by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, motion passes. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to take a moment to commend my colleague, Councilman Catherine Gilmore Richardson, for this particular resolution. I remember when the pandemic first hit the City of Philadelphia, and we were getting bombarded by calls from black and brown small businesses here in the City of Philadelphia who needed a lifeline of support to help their businesses continue to stay afloat. And even though we're slowly coming out of pandemic, we need to make sure that we do not forget that they still continuously need support in getting their businesses back up and running based upon the impact that COVID has had on their business structure, their business revenue post the pandemic. And so, I want to thank her for making sure we continue to stay on top of this issue because at the end of the day, small businesses here in the City of Philadelphia keeps us afloat. We may think as the large corporations, but at the end of the day, as small businesses that hire the most amount of employees in our economy regionally. So thank you very much for allowing me to acknowledge her for her laser-like focus on this particular issue.
Thank you, Councilman, thank you, and thank you, Councilwoman, for your great work, continued presence on the City Council of Philadelphia. Look forward to many more. Mr. Decker?
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Education to hold public hearings on the creation of the 21st Century School District of Philadelphia CTE Middle and High School focused on careers in trades and technology, introduced today by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President, I just wanted to take a moment to commend you and Councilmember Thomas, our Chair of Council's Committee on Education, Dr. Watlington, Ryan Boyer from the Philadelphia Building Trades, and everyone who was involved with the announcement that was made last week at Strawberry Mansion High School regarding a program that will help move our young people into good-paying, family-supporting, and sustaining career opportunities with the trades. And so this resolution is really the impetus to talk about an idea that I really want to see come to fruition, which is the creation of a 21st century middle and high school in the City of Philadelphia that is primarily focused on careers in the trades, but also careers in technology. And we know that Philadelphia has a burgeoning life sciences industry that is not coming, but an industry that's here and still coming. And we want to make sure that our career and technical education programs are realigned from a curriculum standpoint so that we can ensure our young people can go directly into those career opportunities. And so, I know that we need to create this type of school for our young people that's state-of-the-art so that they have additional opportunity. Because I learned as a former teacher that not all of our young people will go to college, but they should be college or career-ready at graduation, and that's what we need to continue to do. So with that, I move the adoption of this resolution.
It's been moved in property second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and motion passes, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing February 2023 as Career and Technical Education Month in Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing February 2023 as Environmental Justice Month in the City of Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President, I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating Champion of the Week, Anthony Capel of Mercy Career and Technical High School for his success in founding, promoting, and managing his own clothing brand, Five Star Clothing, introduced today by Councilman Thomas.
Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution, and I also want to take a moment again to recognize Mr. Anthony, who joined us a little late today because he's our Champion of the Week for today. So recognize Mr. Anthony, move for the adoption of the resolution.
Thank you. It's been moved in property second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and congratulating educator Marvin Dutton for celebrating his organization, Marvin's Education Services, 10-year anniversary servicing the youth of Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilman Thomas.
Chair recognizes, Councilman, Councilman Johnson, did you want to be recognized? Before we call. You good? Yeah? Did you want to be recognized?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, sir. I just want to also, a lot going on today, but it should be duly noted, I want to acknowledge Councilman Isaiah Thomas for taking the time to honor Marvin. I've known Marvin, probably when he first started his program, it was around the time my son was born, back in two, some time ago. My son is six, is eight now, so I met Marvin about two years before then, but I was always impressed because he took on one of the key issues that we have to address here in the City of Philadelphia, and that's making sure our young people are educated, right? Education is the passport for all of us out of poverty. And so, for him to create his own tutorial program, right, that supplements the education our young people are receiving in the Philadelphia public school system and our charter school system as well as our private and parochial system is, is a mission that I believe is worthy of the honor that he's receiving today. And so, I wasn't able to be with him during his 10-year celebration last weekend because I was out of town, but he did give me a call and just asked for my support, and I just wanted to let him know that I will continuously support him as he moves forward. We partner on other initiatives that he provided services to, and I just want to hope that all the people in this, in this body, if you're looking for a person to partner with in your district to teach young people around achieving an education, achievement with math, then I would ask you to consider working with this young man in this particular initiative. And just want to personally publicly acknowledge him and thank the Councilman Thomas for bringing him to this body, and that's one of his, I guess, part of Team Thompson. And so, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Council President, thank you, Councilmember Johnson, for your kind words, as well as Councilmember Vaughn, for your kind text message, and all of my colleagues in council, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Education to hold public hearings examining the levels of learning loss as well as attendance trends as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and to understand how the school district of Philadelphia plans to address these issues, introduced today by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
In conjunction with Member Thomas, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Education to hold public hearings to examine the top-performing magnet schools in Philadelphia, understand their strengths and relationship to underperforming schools, and to develop strategies for future success, introduced today by Councilman Jones.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
In partnership with Chairman Thompson, Thomas, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Education to hold public hearings to evaluate tracking for post-graduation pathways, including college retention rates, career alternatives, military opportunities, and the school-to-prison pipeline, introduced today by Councilman Jones.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
With apologies to the chairman for the amount of work he's going to have to put in for all of these resolutions, I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the City Council Committee on Education to hold public hearings to examine the progress of the school safe corridor program to understand its effect on violence reduction, introduced today by Councilman Jones.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
And I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities to hold hearings to examine the Philadelphia Water Department request to increase water, sewer, and stormwater rates and charges and its impact on the citizens of Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and recognizing the dedicated service of Betsy, Ms. Betty Buford, whose determined advocacy, whose determined advocacy on behalf of her South Philadelphia community has strengthened her neighborhood as well as the City of Philadelphia, introduced today by Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you, Council President.
Yes, Chair, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and celebrating the 2023 St. Patrick's Day Parade, introduced today by Councilman Driscoll.
Chair recognizes Councilman Driscoll.
Council President moved the adoption of the amendment, of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and celebrating the career of Joseph T. Aschdel, introduced today by Councilman Driscoll and Councilman O'Neill.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Driscoll.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Clarina I.W. Tolson on the occasion of her retirement from public service, introduced today by Councilman Squilla and co-introduced by Councilman Phillips.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion passes, resolution is adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Phillips.
I just wanted to make a, thank you, Council President. I simply just wanted to add just a few remarks about Clarina Tolson. Clarina Tolson is someone that is near and dear to my heart. I love Mrs. Tolson. She's not only, she's known to you as Commissioner Tolson, but for me, when my mother passed away 13 years ago, can I, wait a minute, okay. When my mother passed away 13 years ago, a friend of mine named Lorena Tolson came, came into my life and said, "I heard that your mom passed away, and I wanted to invite you to our family dinner." At the time, I did not, for Christmas, at the time, I did not know that Mrs. Tolson was the City Commissioner for Streets. I just knew that her mother was a great cook and that she needed someone, she wanted to invite me over to dinner. Ever since then, Mrs. Tolson and the Tolson family has been there every step of the way and anything that I needed. This family has provided me mentorship, they provided me with support emotionally, and most importantly, they've provided me with a lot of love. And Mrs. Tolson has always been at the, at the helm of that. One of the things I'll tell you about Mrs. Tolson is that a lot of people don't know in the City of Philadelphia, I did mention that she's an excellent cook, for sure, but she's full of laughter, full of love, and she's also a person who is just really good with connecting her friends to opportunities and supporting them to be excellent individuals. So I was very happy when Councilmember Squilla helped to co-introduce this, asked me to co-introduce this particular resolution because I really love Mrs. Tolson, and I want to thank her for her 40 years of service in the City of Philadelphia under six different mayors. As the Streets Commissioner, she was one of the most innovative people ever. She helped us really re-energize our recycling program. And one of the stories that her husband said, and I'll stop here, her husband made mention of the fact that, and the blizzard in 1996 occurred, and there was six men that came to their door to literally shovel her out. And when they shoveled her out, she said, "I'll be back." And she never came back many, until days later. That shows her dedication to the City of Philadelphia. So I just wanted to say, I'm just so happy that we're honoring her for all of the service that she's done to the city.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
I join my colleague, Member Phillips, in recognizing Ms. Tolson, Commissioner Tolson. She's a 4th District resident. But as Streets Commissioner, when I first got elected, you know, we kind of wanted to be, take a deeper dive into departments, and I made the mistake of challenging her that I could throw more trash than she could. Well, after one block of throwing trash, it was over. And she kept going and kept going and was an amazing leader of that department. I further remember, as an elected official, a great snowstorm. I can't remember what year it was, but Winfield, 96? Well, this is after I was elected, so this, this one... I remember because I was getting so many calls, I was overwhelmed, President Clark, with calls about small streets. And we couldn't get people out. And it was so bad that the EMS people had to take people out on sleds. And I'll never forget her sending the troops, the, the plows through Winfield. Um, and I just couldn't, I, I recorded it, I still have it. And people were clapping just to see that kind of basic city service that for 40 years she provided. And so, um, she went on to the Park and Authority. But, you know, I hope that the next mayor will be smart enough to bring her back somehow, some way as a consultant. Because when it comes to basic services, she knows her stuff. And so, thank you, Member Phillips, for recognizing her.
Thank, thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Council President. I too wanted to thank, uh, our colleagues, Councilmember Squilla and Councilmember Phillips, uh, for recognizing Clarina Tolson on the occasion of her retirement. Uh, I too wanted to give her kudos and, on the occasion of the 175th anniversary of the Philadelphia High School for Girls, I just wanted to mention that she too is a girls' high graduate, uh, our 222nd graduating class of the Philadelphia High School for Girls, my neighbor in the fourth council district, and a tremendous public servant who really embodies the intangible spirit of the Philadelphia High School for Girls. So kudos and congratulations to Clarina Tolson. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. Also, too, rise to, um, acknowledge, um, the dedication to public service and the work of Ms. Clarina Tolson. Now we honor her today. Uh, most people may or may not know that, um, she hails from South Philadelphia. Um, her dad was the former state representative of the seat I held of the 186th Legislative District by the name of State Representative Ed Wiggins. Um, he was also a prodigy of the late Congressman Bill Barrett, who was a powerhouse in South Philadelphia. Um, Clarina Tolson is his daughter. So she come from a long line of public servants, um, and has always remained committed to improving the quality of life of not only all Philadelphians, but also her late, um, also her home neighborhood of South Philadelphia. Um, still being a member of Union Baptist Church, um, at 19th, um, in Fitzwater. So, uh, when I saw, um, the introduction, um, I said, "It's only very fitting, um, to acknowledge her," but also, um, the very heartfelt words that, um, Councilman Phillips shared regarding his relationship, um, that's Clarina Tolson. That's always been her character and how she carried herself. And so, with that being said, I want to, I just wanted to add my, um, words of support as she's being acknowledged on this day. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I was here when Clarina Tolson started. And I'm, I'm proud to say I was because I'm witness to how she started. She started in a new position, helping city council members with constituent services. I'm not even sure the position exists anymore. But she looked like she was in high school when she started. And she would be in office, and I'm sure my colleagues' offices, but I know in mine, at least once a week. And now I understand the level of, um, service, public service she had in her DNA. Because I wasn't aware of it. But, um, when you say somebody started at the bottom and worked their way up and became the, the top dog in the, in the department, she was that. She started at the lowest level and rose to the highest level. And, um, uh, it's deserving. And while her hair may be a little grayer, she, she looks like she did when she started in the early 80s. Uh, and, uh, she's always happy too, which is, has been mentioned. Never, never seen Clarina upset, no matter what you were, not yelling, but trying to get done. She always, uh, uh, just knew what she was doing. And now that I know her background, it explains why someone was so mature in the area of public service at such a young age and continued it and continued to grow. But I'm glad I got to mention that and glad I got to know her from the beginning.
Thank, thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Clarina Tolson was someone that I, uh, knew in, in many different, um, capacities. You know, whether it's revenue or streets or, you know, the PPA or all, you know, any of the different departments in which she worked in, she just, um, had a real spirit of excellence. And so, I just wanted to join the chorus of my colleagues and salute her as someone who was always wanting to be helpful to each and every one of us, no matter, you know, what department you're in, you know, who you represent. Uh, Clarina was a real trooper and it's, it's going to be a real loss, I think, to the city of Philadelphia, um, that she retires. Hopefully she won't go far and, uh, we'll be able to call on her for her expertise. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, actually forgot, Mr. Decker, did we call for some of these speeches? We did already pass. Thank you. Thank you all. Having any additional resolution?
A resolution recognizing February 2023 as American Heart Month and honoring the American Heart Association of Philadelphia for their work in providing health resources in Philadelphia, emphasizing the importance of, importance of heart health and encouraging a healthy lifestyle. Introduced today by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to recognize that we did have representatives from the American Heart Association here, um, but they had to leave for their conference. So we want to shout them out and recognize that they had been here earlier. Um, you know, uh, I move for the adoption of the resolution. This is a very important resolution. Thank you.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it. Motion passes, resolution adopted.
And a resolution recognizing, honoring, and celebrating Imhotep Institute Charter High School on its 25th birthday. Introduced today by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Rodney Little for his exemplary and outstanding service as a dedicated public servant, police officer, union leader, and military veteran. Introduced today by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We will now, that concludes our calendar for today. And we will have our speeches on behalf of the members, speeches on behalf of the minority. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Thank you, Council President and Council colleagues. I want to take a moment to lift up the resolution that I passed today honoring Betsy, Ms. Betty Buford, who many of you know for her years of dedication to service in her South Philadelphia community. As we enter Black History Month, this is a first in my series of resolutions honoring Black women for their essential contributions to our city. I knew Ms. Betty well, and I've seen her strength as an organizer firsthand. She and I organized together in support of public education, um, against predatory development. And I've always been in awe of her integrity. And I thought it was important, um, I think my colleague, Councilmember Johnson, mentioned to give people their flowers while they're living. And too often, as Black women, we're not honored until the end. So I thought it was important that we honor folks who paved the way for my advocacy and my organizing. She taught me so much when I just started out as a young organizer. It was the three amigos. Ms. Betty, Ms. Wilma, and where did she go? Ms. Maria, she was here too. Oh, she had to leave. And I just want to make sure that I honor them now. Uh, Ms. Betty has been an integral member of several neighborhood-based campaigns, including the Coalition to Save Libraries in 2008 and 2009, the Coalition to Embolish the Undemocratic School Reform Commission, the group of Point breeze neighbors that organized an attempt to prevent the sale of Smith Elementary School to be turned into luxury apartments. Ms. Betty has never been afraid to stand up to powerful interests, whether it be fighting against multinational corporations attempting to interfere in her neighborhood or local developer threatened retaliatory measures when Ms. Betty joined the lawsuit against them. Ms. Betty's passion and devotion is evident in every campaign she's worked on. Her work in the Coalition to Save Libraries led to being named the president of the Friends of Queen Memorial Library in Point Breeze in 2009, which is a position that she continues to hold today. And at the time when our young people need investment and support and robust programming more than ever, Ms. Betty's passion for education, community advocacy, libraries, uh, reminds us all that we need funds for these city services. And I know there are many people in the council chambers today who showed up to celebrate Ms. Betty. Some have left because of her work that she has been doing for years and for others. Her courage is an inspiration to people who believe in doing what's right. And I'm so proud to honor her with this resolution today. Thank you so much, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you, Council lady. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to take a few moments to speak on the recent headlines that have refueled national dialogue about police reform and corruption within law enforcement. As I'm sure many of us were, I was sickened and horrified by the footage released last week of Tyree Nichols' arrest and savage treatment at the hands of the members of the Memphis Police Department. My immediate thoughts were, what if it was my son? What about my inability to protect him if, God forbid, something like this were to happen to him in DC? Especially with him being so far away from anyone else in his family and or village. My subsequent thoughts were of the heartache that too many Black mothers have been forced to endure because of cowards and monsters who hide behind badges, as well as an oath to serve and protect our communities. This is what creates the mistrust that runs so deep within the Black and Brown communities and is what leads me to the recent news of the Philadelphia Police Department's 22nd District Captain Nasid Akil, who's accused of paying himself with an anti-violence grant meant for a youth boxing program called Guns Down Gloves Up that he started. He, like the former Memphis Police Officer, betrayed our trust of their communities. Maybe not the same way, but it's betrayal nonetheless. And Captain Akil should be terminated for his actions. Behavior like this must have consequences. Behavior like this is exactly why so many people, particularly our youth, struggle to have faith in those who claim to stand for justice and reform. Behavior like this is what overshadows the good, honest deeds of the law enforcement officers who really do care and have the best interests of all our citizens at heart. This body has done some outstanding work around police reform. Consider the fact that the traffic stop that led to Tyree's death might not have happened in the first place if he were driving here in Philadelphia. Thanks to Councilman Thomas, Thomas's driving equality bills. And though, and through Councilmember Jones's hard work, the establishment of our brand New Citizens Police Oversight Commission gives us hope that we can build a just system built on community trust. And we can't build that trust unless we can hold police accountable when, when people in their custody are injured and killed. We must and will always demand better for those who rely on to protect us. Thank you, Council President.
Sorry. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Harity.
Hello, Council President. I just wanted to thank my co-sponsor, Mike Driscoll, and all of my council colleagues for voting, uh, on my first resolution today to raise the, calling on the legislature to raise the minimum wage. I firmly believe that this is a human right and people should be entitled, uh, to a living wage, something they can raise a family on. And I'm so happy that everybody voted for this resolution today. But I also am saddened because yesterday, uh, and it's an everyday occurrence in my neighborhood, we had another victim of gun violence. A 48-year-old man was shot at the Market Frankfurt Allegheny L-stop. Uh, he was shot in his back. Uh, with, you know, uh, it's just senseless violence. And I would be doing us a disservice if I didn't also ask for the legislature to man up. And if they don't want to do it, then give us the right to enact our own gun legislation also here in the city of Philadelphia. Enough's enough. Somebody has to make a stand. And I can tell you, if they don't have the guts to do it, I know this body does. So just pass the buck and we'll take it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, just saw a group of young people coming in. I'd like to recognize them, but I do not know who they are. Can we? Can you quickly, just whoever brought them in, could you just? Sarah? Oh, you want to? Who? And you, you all are from where now? Parkway, all of you? Thank you all so much for coming in. We appreciate. Awesome. Unfortunately, we're getting ready to close out for today. So next time, come a little earlier so you, so you can see us in action. We appreciate you being here, though. Um, real quick before, I'm sorry. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
I just wanted to recognize that they are from the eighth council district as well. Welcome.
Eight, grade eight. Thank you all again. Next time, just come along. We really would like you to see what we do here. You know, it's important. We appreciate you all being here. Um, before we close out, uh, just want to make an announcement. Uh, the Philly Street Light Improvement Project on Thursday, February 2nd, in the caucus room immediately following our council session. And lunch will be provided. That's always a good thing. Uh, the Philadelphia Energy Authority, the Streets Department, the Office of Sustainability, and, and the project lead vendor, Amoresco, will provide detailed project updates, um, how stakeholder engagement is being incorporated in citywide lighting design, an update on project costs and bond issuance, and a timeline, which is very important, uh, for installation and data-driven process for prioritizing neighborhoods with the greatest lighting needs. I see Emily Shapiro over there from our Energy Authority. So, um, folks, it's real important. I know, um, we were out in the street yesterday and people were talking about being able to light the streets up is a significant issue as it relates to, uh, public safety. Uh, so that's available for members and staff immediately following, uh, the council session. Uh, and with that, the chair recognizes Councilman Squilla for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the council stay adjourned until Thursday, February 9th, 2023 at 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. It's been moved and probably seconded, the council stay adjourned until Thursday, February 9th, 2023, 10:00 a.m. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you all very much.